I carry. Okay, good. All right. So we have our quorum. And so that I am going to go ahead and call this special meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order. Today is Thursday, July 21st, 2022. It is now 5:31 PM. Participating in person here in City Hall Auditorium, we have Councilmember Paul Cavanero. Participating electronically, we have Councilwoman Amber Witt, Councilman David Oliver, and Councilwoman Carrie Hona. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and touch the flag?
America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to award, execute, and administer the contract for the purchase slash trade-in of the Sig Sauer handguns and supplies to Atlantic Tactical, Inc. of New Cumberland, PA, at a net cost of $12,750 to be funded from GL Uniform Allowance Account, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated July 13th, 2022. Pending Board of Public, no, the Board of Public Safety did already approve this. They did. They were able to meet on Monday, the 18th. So. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Hona. Are there questions on the motion? Chief Baldwin and Deputy Captain Barone are here. Hearing no questions. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here in acting as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the WPC Administrator to accept bid from Terryville Chevrolet LLC of Terryville, Connecticut to purchase a 2022 Chevrolet 1500 Silverado for $49,745, which will be funded from Fund Number 31 WPCA Capital Reserve.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a cost-sharing MOU with the town of Harlington concerning the Bog Road Bridge concerning the Bog Road Bridge over the Naugatuck River, as further explained in the City Engineers Memo dated July 18th, 2022.
So moved.
I'll move it.
Kevin Arrow and I heard Councilwoman Rowett. So it's moved and seconded. And this was, I'll remind the council, the motion that was tabled at the last council meeting. The board was expecting or desired an explanation as to the grounds for the 14%, 86% split. And I don't know if I can turn this over to Paul Cousins and you can speak a little bit to the memo that you provided.
Yes, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you. So the memorandum of understanding is based on, the cost split is based on a state statute 13A-100, which states that expenses for bridge maintenance and repairs are based on a ratio of the two towns' total revenue, three-year average. And so we have taken the MOU from 2017, which was when it was originally written, when the bridge was originally put out to bid, and we have rewritten it with both tax revenue figures from Torrington and Harlington, and recalculated those figures, which are 85.26% and 14.74%. And I can add that the town of Harlington had a meeting on Tuesday night of this week, and from what I understand, they have agreed and will be signing the MOU from their end as well. So. I believe it's, they have agreed to it.
Thank you. All right, questions on the motion? Councilman Kevin Arrow.
A couple of things, Mayor. I do understand that this is the way, the statute that was negotiated apparently back some 20 odd years ago. And it is a state statute, but I'm going to vote against this on the basis of the following. Much like state statutes that were related to sewer fees for non-Torrington residents. The animal shelter, which is, at one point, it was a regional animal shelter. It's not a regional animal shelter. The cost, you know, the cost of the animal shelter ultimately landed primarily on Torrington taxpayers. Woodbridge Lake, the maintenance, the build-out and maintenance of our sewer system has squarely landed on Torrington taxpayers for generations. And this is a third example where we're supposed to have this, these statutes that were negotiated back in the midst of time. Who knows under what conditions they were? But I don't think they serve, much like the sewer, again, the state statutes related to sewer usage, the breakout for the animal shelter. I don't think they serve Torrington at all well anymore, particularly in line with, you know, one of the notes that you and your downtown development team consistently and constantly hit us with the definition of Torrington as a micropolitian and all the problems related to that. I mean, there is a great deal of truth to that. We don't get the funding that we deserve, blah, blah, blah. And this is yet another example where I think is grossly unfair, an 85-15 split, okay? If, based on, based on the assumption that we should look at taxes. To me, it seems a much more reasonable approach to these kinds of intercity, interregional districts is look at usage. Look at the usage and treat it as a user fee for towns. And I think in this case, I would object to us approving this. I would urge my fellow councilmen to vote against this and push it back on the state to set up a camera. How difficult could it be in that particular instance to set up a camera and study the usage? I have every confidence that we could figure out by license plates where the traffic is coming from. And then just, let's look at who's seriously using this. From my experience in Torrington, that bridge, aside from, you know, aside from large contractors who are, I think, they actually reside on the other side of the bridge and on the Harlington side. The actual, the actual citizens' use of that bridge is, I think overwhelmingly coming from the Harlington side into downtown Torrington and not the other way around. And why we should be paying 85% of this is beyond me. I think it's unfair. I think, you know, I don't think this bridge is going to collapse in the next year or so. I think we have the time to do this. And I think we should start, once again, I fought for this in terms of the Woodbridge Lake and our sewer usage fees with the state. I would urge that we go back to the state and say, we got to look at, look at this in terms of a smarter way of doing it that's more equitable to the sharing parties in this case. Let's look at usage of this particular asset. It's very simple to determine, I would think. Now, to go lawyerly on this, and I know, you know, we got Vic here and other lawyers, and I'm certainly no lawyer, but, you know, the statute does mention maintenance and repairs, and it seems to me at $3 million, we're doing substantially more than maintenance and repairs. So if this statute, that 1815 split is tied to maintenance repairs, this goes well beyond that definition. And on that basis alone, it should be moot. And we should not be obliged to honor it. And we should set, I think we should set this aside and start a discussion with the state involving Harlington, involving Litchfield on many of these statutes that seem to consistently and constantly negatively impact Torrington taxpayers. So I'm voting against it on that basis.
I'm gonna put you on mute here.
I didn't hear that. Somebody was talking to me directly.
No, I think that corporate councils.
I'm sorry, that was me. I can, I might want to add, I did review this with Paul, to be honest, and from my point of view, I, my decision is, can't be made, Paul, on the basis of assumptions of who might be driving up and down that street. All I know was that the city has has been working on a contract to repair Bog Road for a long time. That contract is now in the execution stage and you know, so policy-wise, I can see maybe where you're coming from, but statutorily wise, I have to follow what the statute is. And statutory construction is that the legislature is presumed to know what is going on in the state of Connecticut. So when they pass a statute, it's considered to be a valid and enforceable statute unless the legislature wants to change it. And currently, there doesn't seem to be a need from the legislature to change this statute. And the other thing I'm wondering about, and I don't know what you'd find if you put up a camera there. You're going to find one thing that the Torrington Sewer Treatments Plant is located completely in Harlington, for one thing, and I don't know what that means. And you're going to find that a lot of the traffic that goes up and down and in and out of those areas have to do with the treatment plant. So, I mean, from my point of view and to the role that I had involved in here, I got, I'm standing by what my opinion was with, to Paul, is I think we go with it. And I can understand there may be some you know, policy questions, but that is not anything. When I'm dealing with a statute, I don't, I can't, I'm not dealing with policy, I'm dealing with what the statute says. So anyway, that's where I'm coming from. Paul, is there anything more that, I mean, is there, am I correct in what we discussed or?
Yes, absolutely. Vic, and you know, the state statute word for word reads expenses of bridges between towns. So my previous statement of, you know, repairs was merely paraphrasing that, that statute, but it specifically says expense of bridges.
I have a couple.
And that's what, that's what the original MOU was written regarding and certainly the intent of the 2017 MOU that never did materialize.
So I have two questions. I actually did drive on this just two days ago, I think for the first time in my 42 years here. So, and I would definitely see that it needs to be repaired, although Paul's comment that it isn't really driven by Torrington residents is probably well taken. But when I was reading everything and it was originally talking back to something in 2005 under Mayor Quinn, was there $70,000 in roadwork done back then? Or is this been delayed that long and is this new work? Is that, that work, but now at 2.7 million or whatever?
That 70,000 was spent on repairs at that time.
Okay.
Okay, since then, right now, I can tell you that at the, at the east end of the bridge, there is a steel plate covering up exposed rebar that this winter, a plow actually lifted a rebar vertically that we had to cut out with a with a quick cut saw because the top layer of the deck is exposed now. And that's why we need to the whole top of the deck is, is shot and needs to be repaired. If you drive it and look at the holes that are in it, the pieces of concrete that are coming out, it's well overdue. It was supposed to have been rebuilt in 2017, and now it's, it's time. And I don't think we can wait much longer considering the traffic that's going over it. It's, it's well past due. That deck being replaced.
Yeah, I definitely only drove it in one direction. I noticed. Did not go back over it. But what if we, as a town, said, no, we can't afford it. We're not going to do it. I mean, what, do we have a requirement, if, if our, if Paul's argument is correct, and it's mostly Harlington residents, and maybe we decide we can't afford it, what happens?
Well, what will happen is the state, so the state of Connecticut rate all bridges that are over 20 feet long. They do a evaluation every two years. And if they rate it any lower than its rating now, they will tell us to close it until we fix it. And if it has to get closed at that point, then you're, you're cutting off, you know, three major operations, you know, that need access because access cannot, truck traffic cannot drive up Bog Road into Harlington. So that bridge, that's why the construction of the bridge or the reconstruction has a 22-day closure window in March of 2013. We've accelerated the bridge deck replacement to be as short a term or time as possible to to not affect the businesses that vitally need to use that bridge. So if the state rates it any lower than what it is, it will, they'll tell us, we'll have to close it. And that would have a detrimental impact on all the businesses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And if I may add, I just want to make sure that there's a clear understanding. The state statute that's referred to here isn't just for the city of Torrington. This statute applies to every municipality in the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, I don't doubt that.
Okay.
I don't doubt that. I would love to see, I wish somebody would do, I wish somebody, I wish some grad student trying to write their PhD would do, would do a study about how this is merited towns, cities like Torrington, where bridge usage, I don't know. And I'm not sure. I'm just looking at this particular thing. Again, Torrington having to pay the lion's share of something that's, you know, once again, used primarily by, it seems to me, towns outside, citizens outside of Torrington, businesses outside of Torrington. And we're expected to pay 85% of this. And it is not, to your point, Paul, you just said this. It was not a maintenance and repair. You said we need to do a rebuild. Yes, we're rebuilding a bridge. Okay, 85-15 split was for maintenance and repairs. Simple, easy peasy, that makes sense. But this is a rebuild. And I think in light of that, that justifies a much deeper study about who's actually using it, who's benefiting from it, and who should pay for it. That's my argument.
So if, if I may add also, the vast majority of the traffic on that bridge would be the truck traffic to the WPCA, ONG, and Supreme Industries.
How do we know that?
Well, I guess the same question can be, well, how do we know it's not?
So.
Well, but both of those entities are actually in Harlington, correct?
They're in Harlington.
Are you not making my point?
Well, they, they service, they do a lot of service here in the city of Torrington. ONG, particularly ONG being one of our largest property owners and taxpayers in the city. But what I would add is, so I understand, I understand.
But ONG, no doubt, is paying a hell of a lot of taxes to Harlington, right, being based there.
So the question I have to the council.
The whole thing seems unfair. The whole thing just seems unfair and unstudied, is my point. And it's about time, as City Councilman representing the taxpayers and families of this town, that we study it. And then we say, here's, this is fair. Yes, Torrington clearly owes a big chunk of this. We do. But 85%, that, you know, and again, this is a process going forward with many of these intercity relationships and fiscal sharing statutes that I just think we, it's high time we looked at these with fresh eyes from the perspective of what's in the best interest of Torrington. Period.
And I would, the only thing that I would leave for the council to consider, if there's some inkling to not approve this contract, not get this bridge repaired, but is long beyond, you know, it's rating by the state and at risk of being closed. I would say, we could go and do that study. We could go to the state and say, we feel this statute is unfair. Our argument isn't going to be just to the legislative, legislature. It is going to be with every other small town and big city that share bridges. So the question I have to the council is, are we truly prepared to go out and argue with every other municipality that shares a bridge? That also is.
I'm not sure they are dealing with every other municipality. There may be a whole host of cities, much like Torrington, on the Rust Belt of the westerns, you know, western side of Connecticut, who have similar relationships where the poorer cities on the river that were the manufacturing cities built infrastructure bridges, paid for them, rehabilitate them at 85-15 to the benefit of the much wealthier folks who live in the cities up on the hill. I mean, it's entirely possible that that, this kind of unfairness actually is, is endemic to the western part of Connecticut, the Rust Belt of Connecticut. And I don't know, you don't know. I mean, we're talking about $3.5 million by the time we give ONG the rights to the change contract. You know, it's high time we, we, just as, as a city, we start saying, we need, we need to study this with fresh eyes, these relationships. You know, and get real data, you know, and then make data-driven decisions. And I wish our legislature, it's about time we got them to cooperate and do whatever the hell they're supposed to be doing to look at things in a realistic way.
I hear you.
2022.
I mean, I agree with, with you, Paul, and I'm up for joining you and having those conversations, but having just driven on that bridge once, I mean, we also do have an obligation to keep our residents safe. And it's, I don't know how long that argument will take. And that's why I kind of asked that question, Paul, about, you know, was there work done in '05? And now you're saying it, this work really needed to be done in 17, and I don't, I don't doubt it. I mean, I just can't see that we, I understand our leverage is not getting that bridge done. I get that, Paul, but I also can't, I don't know that we should really be holding that hostage. I just, I think that bridge needs to be done. And we, and I don't know how much, you know, our percentage lowered by us going back after the last meeting a little bit. I'll take a three-quarters of a percent. But I don't know that it will change. It has gone up since 2005. So I don't know if we lose that argument, how much more our percentage goes up as we wait to.
Well, I keep hearing.
I'd like to.
Accommodation, an accommodation argument like you're making, Carrie, I've been hearing these for years, goes certainly further back than the Woodbridge Lake sewer, you know, debate. It goes further back than that, but I, you know, I'll make that a stopping point. And I've heard, you know, accommodation is making the argument, and then nothing gets done. Nothing ever gets done to the detriment of Torrington, time and again. Animal shelter, a regional, I guarantee you, within three or four years, that's going to become regional because it is so good, it is so robust, it is so effective at what it does. It's going to become regional, and then we're going to get, Torrington will get screwed financially. And, you know, if you look back at the history of who paid for that and who maintains it, you know, just like our sewer system, you know, we have neighboring towns, as we all well know, putting developments all along the borders of Torrington and then tapping into our sewer system. All the risk on the Torrington side. On and on it goes. And at some point, it seems like City Council people who are elected to represent Torrington taxpayers and their families need to put their foot down and say, okay, enough, let's draw the line here, and let's start looking at these things. And if you push, because that bridge does need to be rebuilt, I have no doubt in my mind, you know, but then if you push and say no, then you will see people moving faster. Then we go to the, our elected officials in Hartford. Okay, we go to Mr. Case, we go to, you know, Michelle Cook, and we say, okay, let's expedite this thing because we need this bridge built. You're the elected representative. You know, push this thing. Maybe we'll lose. And guess what? If we lose, we're going to pay 85%.
Mayor.
Where we are tonight.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Enough. I'm done. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rowett, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I think it is a battle Councilman Cavanero, you know, with the state, but to, you know, Paul had indicated that to actually not do anything would close that bridge. Do you know how slow the state has been acting on any of their road construction and any of the other issues in any other state agency? So I'd like to move the question for a vote.
All right.
I second.
Okay, so request to move and seconded. So I, I'm sorry, roll call. I will do roll call votes as requested by the council, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Just for the record, I'm going to read again, vote to authorize a matter entered the cost-sharing MOU with the town of Harlington regarding the Bog Road Bridge over the Naugatucka River, as further explained in City Engineers Memo dated July 18th, 2022. In favor, Councilman Kevin Arrow? I mean, it signified by saying aye if in favor. Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Opposed.
Councilwoman Hona?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowett?
Aye.
Councilman Oliver?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Going into item four. I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a contract. Agreement and all construction change orders to ONG Industries, Inc. of Torrington for $23,377,352 and allow for expenditures of up to $237,735 for the rehabilitation of Bog Road over the Naugatucka River. The project is funded by the city, Torrington Payment Management Program, bond fund at 85.26% and the town of Harlington at 14.74% as further explained in the City Engineers Memo dated July 18th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Second by Councilman Oliver. Questions? On the contract?
I have a question.
On the contract?
As written, Mayor.
Yes.
Relevant to the previous discussion. If this bridge is going to primarily, one of the primary uses of it, one of the primary uses is for ONG Industries in addition to our own water treatment team. We're, the way this is worded, we're going to, so this is a bridge that will largely service ONG Industries. Torrington is going to pay 85% of it, but then there will be the change orders related to that will be approved by ONG Industries?
No. No, change orders are approved by.
Right, in the person of the mayor, the way this is worded, not the City Council?
Yes.
I would oppose, look, I'm going to oppose this no matter what, but just because of the previous argument, it's the same, same argument. But I think it's grossly wrong. No offense, Mayor, but, you know, I just think, I hate when the City Council continues to give up its statutory right and obligation to look at, to look at contracts as they appear in front of the city, you know? No offense, it's not you. If this were Owen Quinn, I'd say the same thing. No. It doesn't, it belongs to the City Council to approve overages, okay? And this is almost giving carte blanche to the very person and entities that, that would be well-served to expand and overdevelop this bridge. So. I see the floor. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. The, on the overages, it's 10%, right? If it's above 10%, it does have to come back to the council? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's correct. We're asking for a 10% allowance that, that the mayor can approve. Anything that we go above that would then have to come back to council.
Paul, I know it's not necessarily your department, but in general, that's the way it's always done, right? I do, I remember seeing that with the school project. That's my only.
Yeah. Typically, the state allows, typically, the, you know, a state contract has 10% allowance for contingencies and 10% for for I, it's, I forget the exact term, but they have, or incidentals. So which is their own costs that they incur for inspections and what have you. So that, you know, because the contract is a unit price contract with estimated quantities, it's very unlikely that the lump sum amount that was bid will be the actual final construction cost. And some quantities may increase, some may decrease. And, you know, we, I need to have a buffer, you know, plus or minus of that contract amount, which, you know, involves change orders and balancing change orders, you know, during construction. But we have to set a limit of some point, and that's that 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And all those change orders, by the way, are approved by myself and Ray, and and then anything that goes over that would definitely have to go back to council. So, you know, we run a very tight ship when it comes to change orders and anything that has to be anything that goes above and beyond the contract items.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Hearing that, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Okay, for the record, I have three in favor and one opposed being Councilman Kevin Arrow. All right, moving into item five. I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute the contract for the replacement of the small salt shed cover at the Public Works Department to iron horse structures of northeastern Mass for the amount of $43,470, which will be funded from the Capital Reserve Public Works roof account.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Hona. The floor is open for questions. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to extend the tree trimming and removal services contract to a splint tree expert company, Willow Grove, Pennsylvania. They have a branch location in East Windsor, Connecticut for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated July seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second by Councilman Oliver. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number one, four, three, dash, two, three, two, supporting the Torrington Housing Authority's application. Actually, I'm going to rephrase this. Supporting the city of Torrington's application with Torrington Housing Authority for DECD funding through the Community Investment Fund twenty-thirty grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and six, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars for rehabilitation of the Torrington Towers sprinkler and fire alarm system. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And second by Councilman Oliver. All right, I wanted, I did ask Claudia Sweeney to attend the meeting so she can explain what it is that needs to be done and why this is the appropriate grant fund for us to apply for these improvements.
Hi, I'm Claudia Sweeney. I'm the director of the Torrington Housing Authority. We are requesting this funding because we're having a severe problem in Torrington Towers. The sprinkler system is great except for one spot in each apartment, and that's the spot above the stove. For whatever reason, when the sprinkler system was installed, that particular turn was not made out of steel, but instead was made out of some type of PVC. The PVC has failed on several occasions, and the flood that ensues is horrific. Could live with that, except that all the water goes into the elevator shaft. When the sprinkler system has an issue, the elevators automatically go to the first floor. The elevators in Torrington Towers have all of their guts, if you will, on the top of the cars. So all that water coming into the elevator shaft is going on to the guts of the elevators, both elevators, and is rusting them out. This has happened approximately four times in the past year and a half. And I have now had to replace all of those guts because of the ensuing rust and the other problems. It's very hard to get parts. Sometimes they have to be made because they are old. And it is a real problem when the elevators go down, when you have a fourteen-story high-rise with elderly and disabled people. It's traumatic. That's all I can say. My greatest fear is having done all this work, we're in the process of doing all this work to upgrade the elevators and make them work like they're supposed to work, that I'll have another sprinkler spurt, and I'll have the same problem again. So what I'm requesting of the Community Investment Fund grant is money to fix that problem in every single unit. It's eleven hundred dollars in every single unit. And then also, at the same time, to rehab my alarm system, which currently there is, we do have the ability to make announcements and things of that nature, but the alarm is not strobe-enabled for the hearing impaired. So we would like, it has been damaged also by these floods, and it is has its issues. So now is the time, not only to make it ADA compliant, but to make it a much better system. I'm not asking for any money from the city. The grant is only for municipalities and nonprofits, but I am, the housing authority is allowed to make application with that Torrington City as the lead applicant. So that is my request at this time.
Thank you, Claudia. So the motion, as you heard, is to authorize or, yeah, authorize the city to be the lead applicant, co-applicant with the housing authority. And as you heard, this is, all of these repairs will directly impact the problems that have been going ongoing for a long period of time with the elevators. Our fire department is called to the towers frequently when those elevators are down. And as you heard, thirteen floors, it gets to be very difficult to provide provisions to those people living on the thirteenth floor when they cannot possibly use the stairs. So the floor is open for questions. Councilman Cavanaro.
Mayor or madam, this quarter of a million dollars, this, the number here, is that what the grant is? I mean, where did that number come? Will that address the problem?
Yes, those numbers are my numbers. I've gone out, I've gotten bids.
Okay.
For this work, and that's why I'm requesting that amount.
Suit to nuts, this will fix whatever it is that you're concerned about. Okay.
Correct. I would also say that there is no overhead in this number. It is strictly, it's eleven hundred dollars for each individual unit of two hundred unit, well, one hundred and ninety-six, because we've done four. And forty thousand for the upgrade of the alarm system.
And fire department, I mean, they were involved in the bid process, I mean.
Yes, I have a letter from them.
Okay, so they, did they approve of whatever it is you're proposing here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? I'll call the motion. Oh, and I just want to make sure that the council members did see the revised resolution, number one, four, three, two, three, two. I believe the city clerk sent it out to you this afternoon. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you. And I just would like to give a shout out to the fire department because the last flood that we had, which was our worst, was at midnight on April Fools, of course. And after the initial work that had to be done by the fire department, they stayed for hours and helped us clean up. Hours. So I would just like you all to know that. And I'm very, very thankful for that.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move into item number eight. I'll entertain a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the MOU between the city of Torrington and the Board of Education for long-term use of property located at two, seven, seven Winthrop Street, more formerly known as Elise Bass Park Parking Lot, pending the building, and actually, I don't think we need this pending. Both Building Committee and Board of Education have already approved this MOU. So the motion is just for the approval and authorization to execute the MOU. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And second by Councilman Hona. Are there questions on the MOU or that parking lot use? Hearing none. Good. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, continuing with the school construction project, I'll entertain a motion to approve ONG's guaranteed maximum price amendment for Phase One site enabling construction, which has already been approved by both the Building Committee and the Board of Education. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on this document? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and the purchasing agents to waive the bid process and accept the state, regional, and national bids for city projects and materials for the contracts listed in the Public Works Director memo dated July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro, and I heard Councilwoman Ruwet. The floor is open for questions.
Mayor.
Councilman Cavanaro.
Yep, I'm going to vote against this as well, for no other reason than a continuation of the previous discussion about Bog Road, which is that I don't like waiving bid processes in general. There's a reason why they're in place. I know it makes things easier for our departments. I get that. I just don't, at this point, I would like to see those, I would like the city council. And when I leave the city council, I would like future city councils to be able to look at as much of this stuff as possible because there's enough discussion about how the state is conducting business related to large-scale projects, at least from what I read. That makes me want to have our city council involved in looking at these bids on a case-by-case basis. So.
You all done?
I think her mic is live and she's talking to somebody else.
Okay.
So, all right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely. The floor is still open. Other questions or comments on the motion?
I apologize.
That's fine.
I have a two-year-old here, so. Distracting. Although the timing was good when you asked.
Brian is visiting.
No further comments. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So I have two opposed and I have two in favor. That falls to me to break the tie, and I will vote in favor of this. It is a state bid process that we are relying on. It is, it is not circumventing or or neglecting our obligation to look for the lowest bids. And this is a practice that is longstanding in the city of Torrington. I respect what the council members are saying, but under the circumstances, I do agree that this is appropriate and in the best interest of the taxpayers. So this motion does pass. Moving on to item eleven, I will entertain a motion by the city council here in acting as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the WPCA Administrator to accept the bid from G A Fleet Associates Inc. of Ry Brook, New York to purchase a replacement submersible pump for the New Harwinton Avenue Pump Station. For the sum of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, funding will be from Fund Thirty-One WPCA Capital Reserve. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And second, I hear, Councilman Oliver. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer lanes in Corporation Council's revised memo dated July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number one, four, three, dash, two, three, three, which adapts the Northwest Tails Council Government Hazards Mitigation Plan Update two thousand and twenty-two dash, two thousand and twenty-seven as the city of Torrington's official plan. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Ruwet. Questions? Hearing none, I'll call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This being a special meeting and there being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. And second by Councilwoman Hona, Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much in this heat and accommodating our time.